All right, well, let's get started. We do have a quorum. We have four of our eight members present. So we'll start off with introductions. And welcomes to the board. I am Quinlan O'Connor. I'm the Chair and a City Member, Lois. You're muted.
Hi, I'm Lois Steinbeck. I'm a county member.
Is it Char?
Yes, it's Charlotte. It's spelled differently, so I go by Char. It's easier, S-H-A-R.
Dan, are you a city or a county member?
I'm a county member.
Great, and welcome to the board.
Thank you.
And Austin?
Hey, Austin here, and I am a City Board Member.
Great, well, welcome to the board. The only item on our agenda tonight is a City Projects Update. I'm assuming Director Brink that this is off to you.
Char, so thanks, Char. Can everybody hear me? I'm on a new computer and I haven't really tested Zoom yet, so.
So far, so good.
Oh, perfect. So. If you'll let, well, I'll share right there.
So you should be able to go ahead and share, Chris.
Yeah. Perfect. All right. So I just want to give a update on several projects that, excuse me, community development staff have been working on. Of course, you all know the Land use plan project that we've been working on, and I give, not continuous updates, but periodically I give the Consolidated City County Plan Board updates on that, and I'll do the same today. But we also have other projects I just wanted to let everyone know about that we don't normally provide information to you guys relative to what we're doing from a work product standpoint. So, the Land Use Plan, so it is going full bore. Currently, we're between the fall and winter cycle. You see the star there at the end of public engagement. I just wanted to let everyone know we've not stopped public engagement. That will be ongoing through the course of the Land Use Plan process. But right now, we're at a milestone relative to our plan. So we have completed, or the consultant has completed, an existing conditions memo. As you recall, back in June when they were here, they really dived into existing conditions, did windshield surveys of the city, did some mapping projects, and came up through the, drafted during the course of the summer, reviewed and did a draft memo for city staff and steering committee members relative to existing conditions. So now, and I'll show you where we can find that here shortly. But now, we've begun the visioning and recommendation stage. Last week, or I guess it was a week before, we held our first real big public engagement opportunity, and that was a community visioning workshop. Attended about forty-five individuals that really dove into starting the visioning discussions. That is key cornerstone of Land Use Plan. So that's kind of where we are now. And as you remember, when we first started talking about a Land Use Plan last year, it's about an eighteen-month process. So we're about, I don't know, a quarter to a third of the way through with wrap-up anticipated the fall of next year. So the existing conditions memo, which I mentioned, this is really the first work product out of the Land Use Plan process so far. And it is exactly what it's said, existing conditions. It is an overview of existing conditions in the city, where it be current plans and studies and reports, demographic and economic development trends. It's an overview of our existing land uses and current zoning in the city. It's an overview of our transportation networks and mobility options. And the list goes on, cultural, recreational, community facilities and infrastructure, and our natural resources and open space. So it's a snapshot of what the city is and where we are today, right? So that was the first work product. It's about seventy pages long. It is on our community development site, our Land Use Plan site, under Documents, I believe. But we can definitely provide links in an email to members of the board. It's pretty good reading, a lot of maps and information, a lot of data, a lot of analysis that the consultant has done up until this point. Some of our public engagement pieces that we've kind of rolled out and been working on in conjunction with the consultant. So there in the top left, that was our notification or publication piece relative to our visioning workshop that was a couple of weeks ago. And you'll see down in the right-hand corner a QR code. Anytime we provide a flyer, or a card, or a mailing, or a water bill insert, or whatever it is, we're going to have a QR code that is easy to just tap it and go to the project website. So on that project website, that's hosted by Howso Levine, who was our consultant. We have maps and data right there on the lower left. That is a snapshot from back at the end of August, I believe is when that was taken. This is in the existing conditions memo, but we have an online questionnaire or survey. Those show the responses to that survey up until that date. I think these dots represent seventy-four respondents to that survey. I've checked today, and it's well over one hundred and twenty as of this morning. To the left, I mean, excuse me, to the right, is our map dot social tool, where citizens, interested individuals, whoever wants to go and map things they like about the city, things they don't like about the city, troubling intersections, whatever they want to map, you're allowed to do and put it on the map. So you see, we've had four hundred and sixty-three comments on our map dot social tool. Individuals have created thirty-five maps with a total of thirty-five contributors. So it's a tool not really used relative to the overall contributors, but the comments are amazing. So you can go onto that tool on the project site. You can see everybody's comments. You can filter relative to what the comments are subject to, and the legends hidden, apologize.
Chris.
Yeah, Lois, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Could you go back to the last slide, Chris? When you talked about the red dots and you have about a hundred and twenty responses now, what is an average rate of response? I mean, what's considered a good response to these kind of questions? Ten percent of the people who live there, one percent? What, any statistics on that?
I think statistically, I think if you get a three percent response rate, you're doing well. You're able to glean some stats from that. So with the population base of, you know, thirty-five thousand people, a hundred and twenty respondents is a significant statistical contribution. But, you know, it doesn't provide fair representation. We're able to glean data from that, but is it really valuable from across section of the city? Maybe not. But the comments are still valuable, right? And so we still have, we'll take these comments, you know, through the life of this Land Use Plan process. So as we roll, you know, notifications out, social media or PIO, it's pretty good about hitting that up at least, you know, once or twice a week. So it grows. And like I said, this was a month ago, was seventy-four. And just in another month, we've gotten almost fifty more respondents. So time helps. Time helps us get good valuable feedback and data.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. So that was kind of the Land Use Plan in a nutshell. Are there questions about the Land Use Plan, where we are? I know I had mentioned that we're going to involve the planning board through this process, and we will. There's just been a lot of background work, so there's not been a lot of stuff for us to to bring forward to you and get feedback from the consolidated board.
Char, did you have a question?
Yes, Chris, I'm new, and so I'm playing catch-up here. I'm familiar with this exercise, and could I get, could you send me an email link so I can review this more thoroughly?
Absolutely. Yep, yep. So I'll send email links to both the community development page that has some basic information as well as our consultants' project page.
Yeah, I'd be interested in looking at all, what did you say, seventy pages?
Yes.
That'd be great.
Yes, that's easy. We can get that to you.
Great, thank you.
And Char, it's in the chat also, but I'm sure the Director Brink will send it as well. Any other questions?
Okay.
All right.
So there's some other projects that we've been working on that's not Land Use Plan related. About a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, we started down the road of being really, it's going to sound bad, but to be really transparent in what we do and getting our story out there. So we've created an Interactive Development Explorer. It's a data portal showing workload, caseload, projects that we're working on relative to applications. But we've called it our Interactive Development Explorer. And this is on our community development main page with the link to it. And hopefully, if everything goes well, it will open up this page. So far, so good. This is what our explorer page looks like. So on that, we have information relative to residential projects that are in progress, commercial permits that are in progress, as well as all commercial and residential building permits that we've issued since 2020. We picked 2020 for historical data because that was really the beginning of our growth policy. So we wanted to capture success since the last growth policy was updated in 2020. So when you see references to historical data that only started in 2020, we can go back further, but we just picked the date and time because that's when the growth policy was adopted, the current one. We also capture, from a land use standpoint, commercial residential developments that get commission approval, when a city commission approval, zoning conditional use permits have gone through the approval process, as well as current subdivision approvals, and then annexations. And I'll go back and look on one of these so you can kind of see how we tie back to one of our other tools that we've got. Sezoni map, Etralanges map, vacant land, historical district, and some basic information on urban renewal districts and city infrastructure projects. So before, a year and a half ago, this was all in various locations, but we really consolidated on this explorer. Or it's a, you know, development hub, if you want to call it that. So I'm just going to kick on a, on the commercial map.
And we can't see what you're clicking on now. We just still have your PowerPoint.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. So I am now on our community development page, and I apologize. I thought you could.
I think you just need to reshare your screen for whichever screen you're now on.
I got you. Oh, yep. Different tab. My apologies. Okay, everybody can see this?
Yep.
So this is our commercial commercial building permits that are in progress. So we'll just pick one. I think this is going to be fairly obvious to everybody. This is a Capitol Mall site. Nope, that's the wrong one. Well. Just bear with me. So I'll just click on this permit there. There's a pop-up window. You can see the pop-up window that just popped up. Information on this permit, location, date that it was issued, and this is for all of our permits. We do this. Valuation, address, the type, but what is really interesting, this goes into the next tab that will open up, and I'll make sure I share that screen as well. So this is our civic access page that we've been working on. Everybody can see this, says permitting, planning, and licensing.
Yes.
Beautiful, thank you. So this has been a year and a half in the making. A lot of staff time, a lot of city time to get this implemented. But this is now a portal that citizens, developers, business owners can, one, apply for permits, apply for any of our land use cases, either be it zoning, subdivision, annexation, as well as apply for businesses, business licenses, and professional licenses in the city. So any interaction that requires a license or a permit or plan approval, the citizens can go onto this portal and make application. End are the days of paper application submitals. We still take them, but we encourage everybody not submit paper. It's all done digitally. So back, if you remember the page where I just clicked on the permit, that was, that just happened to be Panera. Getting ready to open up probably within the next week. So this is what the citizens or anybody really can view relative to information on the permit. Date that it was issued, date that it was applied, valuation, what type of permit that it is, a descriptor. And then really, for the developer, the applicant side, they now get to see where exactly this permit is in our workflow process. So there is no mystery now when somebody goes on their permit where it is in the process, either it be a review or an inspection. They pull up their application or their permit on the portal, and they can see exactly where it is in the process. Now we'll scroll down to the bottom. So you see it's past final building's day, planning and zoning, we passed it today, fire, engineering, so we're waiting on transportation and utility. Once they've done their part, and I think it's scheduled for tomorrow, they should be given the green light to open. So this is kind of the online citizen portal in a nutshell. Citizens have waited a long time for the City of Helena to implement this. We've had a system for the back office piece called Track-It since 2017, but it really didn't offer a public portal piece to it. So now we've revamped and now gone to what's called Intergov or EPL, Enterprise Permitting and Licensing. So this is a public-facing piece. There's a whole back office staff facing part to it, too, that I won't open. But just to provide this as an overview. Get back to my PowerPoint, make sure I'm on task.
Lois, did you have a question before we move back to the PowerPoint?
Sorry, Lois.
I didn't want to have a question. I wanted to tell you, this is really great. I think this is an excellent way to allow citizens to have access to information. Thank you.
So, thank you, Lois. So this went live June the twenty-sixth of this year. Initially, it wasn't, when I say initially, within the first week, it was still new. But now we're getting about eighty-five percent of our workload and permit applications are now digitally online as opposed to them coming into the office to make application. And the beauty of this as well, you'll see there's a card, those pay invoices. Now anybody can pay for their billing permit, business license, professional licenses, city dog licenses. They can pay that using the credit card through our portal. And we'll go, I think I'm almost done.
Now you have to reshare your PowerPoint.
So we'll go back. That's where I left off. That's our portal. So to wrap up, a couple of the things that we've worked on concluded. Back, actually, I guess it was back in the spring, we did a wholesale review of our planning division fees and schedule fees, land use subdivision reviews, a real top-to-bottom review of our fees and what we were charging those that were making application from a land use standpoint. Needless to say, it was, it had been twenty-seven years since the last time we even reviewed and looked at our fees. I was in my second year of my career. That's how far that was. So twenty-seven years later, the City of Helena now has newly adopted fees. They may look drastic relative to what the current fees are. But twenty-seven years has passed, right? So a lot of things have changed relative to just cost of services, cost of mailings, cost of certified mail, cost of public notifications. So we adopted this back in August. And the plan is, or the schedule, for each fiscal year, for the next two fiscal years, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we'll do a minor update to those fees automatically. With the intent is, at the end of final adoption, which will be in July of 2026, we hope to capture at least half of what a recovery cost is. So the half, half of the cost for us to provide the service for that application, we intend on capturing that July first of 2026. So there's no sticker shot with somebody making application. We did these increases incrementally for three years. Chair, Lois has her hand raised.
Yeah, I was just waiting for you to finish up. Lois, do you have a question?
Yeah, Director Brink, I was wondering, why did, why were the fees left unchanged for twenty-seven years? I mean, that seems, what was happening?
Well, I mean, I don't want to speculate, but fee increases are never popular, right? I mean, there's always anxiety when we raise fees. There's the argument that it impacts development, that it's just an extra burden on applicant to pay the fee. But really, our fees are half of the next highest city in the state. So our fees are even half of what, for instance, billings fees are. They're the next highest fee structure. We're half of theirs. There's a whole bunch of factors. I mean, I don't want to speculate why they were never raised. They did do a study or review back probably the mid-two thousands, well, maybe two thousand fifteen, sixteen, I think they did a review, and they just chose not to bring them forward.
So I have a follow-up question. So if fees don't pick up the cost of doing the permit reviews, then does it come out of property taxes that are allocated to the city, or where do the other revenues come from then?
So thank you, Lois. So yes, so community development, the planning side, we can operate as an enterprise fund like our building division does. We, so we do rely on contribution from the general fund. But I think that's valuable because a lot of what we do, sure, an applicant kind of initiates the work from a staff standpoint, but we're really doing work for the city as a whole to make sure projects are properly vetted and reviewed. And we give good, sound recommendations. So we chose half of the recovery cost. Half of the burden is on the applicant, and we've felt it worthy that half of the burden be on the general fund as well. Because we are doing service for the city as a whole, so.
Okay, thank you.
Couple other pieces that we've wrapped up. We've completed a wholesale change of our sign code. Again, bits and pieces, we've made alterations historically, but again, the sign code was originally adopted in nineteen ninety-seven without really too big of a wholesale change. But starting in 2020, staff started reviewing the sign code in conjunction with the zoning commission. And there were really two, two key, some Supreme Court cases that kind of spurred our need to review the sign code. We just weren't in compliance with recent Supreme Court decisions. So we needed to, from a design standpoint, revisit the sign code as well as to get in compliance with recent court cases. So wholesale change to our sign code, it looks different. It's, we hope it's easier to navigate, but then compliant with recent Supreme Court action. So the final piece that we've worked on ordinance-wise, wholesale changes to our historic preservation demolition process. Needless to say, it was a broken ordinance and a broken process. So we've cleaned it up. We've taken the ambiguity out of the ordinance, excuse me. Some of the misinterpretations, we've cleaned a lot of that up, and we've really made it where the process and the workflow fits within typical land use processes. So someone that applies for zone change, the process and the workflow is going to look familiar to them. We just thought it was time. It was a broken ordinance. We felt from a city standpoint, we've cleaned it up. And we worked hand-in-hand with the Historic Tourism Commission, as well as the Historic Preservation Officer, Pam and Kathy, and Greg and his team, to really get this to where I think it's going to be a great tool, and just one tool, so. And that was it. So any questions? I know that's a lot. I said it was going to be quick. But we do a lot of stuff that we don't really customarily let our advisory boards know about, which is a shame, and we're going to fix that. We're going to make sure as we do projects, we give updates to our advisory boards.
Lois, did you have another question?
Yeah, it's a general question. And I guess it kind of relates to signage. I don't know. The malfunction junction down where Main turns into, I guess, Last Chance Gulch, where five intersections come together. There's been, there've been stop signs there for, I don't know how long. Is that going to be replaced by a traffic light, or is it, is this a test to see if that's safe enough to leave five always stops there?
So, thank you, Lois. So I don't want to misspeak and say something that's that's kind of out of my wheelhouse, but I do know, well, I mean, I do know some. So I think the signage is going to be now permanent. I think the preferred alternative, after the city has spoken to the residents in the area, the businesses, just some public feedback on malfunction junction. I believe the signs are now the preferred alternative. It seems like the intersection functions better now. So you see those temporary signs, they're going to turn into larger permanent signs probably by the end of this week or next week at the latest. So there will be permanent signage there moving forward. Now, I think signage in the interim, it's temporary because I think the goal is to make that a roundabout. But in the interim, the city chose to just do signage so that we don't go through the expense of replacing the streetlights and then, or the stoplights, and then they get taken down in a roundabout project. It just seemed like a waste of money.
Thank you.
Greg, did you have something, a question or something you wanted to say?
Oh, thanks, Mr. Chair. I just, this is Greg McNally with the Community Development Planning Department. Just wanted to take a moment to recognize the fantastic work that Director Brink and his staff are doing for the City of Helena and for planning. All that long-range activity that's taking place, I was able to engage in some of those events, and they're great events with a lot of people attending, giving good feedback. Director Brink brought up fees. Director Brink brought up fees. You know, we, in his response to to Lois Steinbeck's question about, you know, the time that's been involved and what those fees, how they're augmented. The county operates in a very similar way. Our fees were last updated. I think on a wholesale board in two thousand nine, we've made some changes, small changes in twenty eleven and twenty fourteen. But those bigger changes that like are made here for the city, we're working on those and getting some of those to be forthcoming for our commissioners to consider. But just like Director Brink indicated, the county believes and the county supports some augmentation of fees for developmental review because it's just a part of the service that the county provides, and we want to have good, good community engagement in that process. And and we want fees to be supportive from the community as well when we review development applications. So but yeah, just great work that the city's been doing and the city staffs have been doing. That citizen portal action that they have on their website is fantastic and not easy to configure. So a lot of kudos to Chris and his staff for getting something like that together. I know it took a lot of time. And it's a wonderful asset that they're bringing forward.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right. Well, I just want to echo what Lois has said. The website looks great, and I think it's all a lot of good work, and it will make it easier for us, but also more importantly, the public to find the information that they're looking for. And it always, I, my condolences on fee updates. It sounds like it was time. Anything else that you have for us, Chris?
All right, here, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any other business from either the city or the county? Lois? Greg, nothing for the county. All right. Lois, did you have something you wanted to say?
I I know our next meeting is for November. What is planned? What are we looking forward to in terms of business?
Ms. Chair, I can speak to that a little bit unless the city wants to add some information as well. We are anticipating you'll have on your agenda a conservation easement request for comments. So this actually is an item that we don't see very often. However, we have actually seen a couple of them in the very recent past. So we'll be seeing another one of those. It is from the Five Bays Land Trust. They are seeking to do a conservation easement for about a hundred and sixty acres just to the west and to the north of the townsite of Lincoln. So a a pretty neat project up there. You'll get to hear a little bit more about that from the Five Bays Land Trust in November. In addition, the county will do a little bit of an update on some of the long range activities that we've been involved in, including our growth policy. Giving an update on our joint infrastructure study that we're engaged in currently and and other things that we've been working on.
Great. And do we know if we're going to see anything from the city next time?
April can chime in, Commissioner, our chair, but I don't believe we're going to have anything for November. But be forewarned, we will have probably a subdivision project with the, at least within the next six months that the consolidated board will see from us. So we'll work on a lot of project with the private developers.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. So with that, the next scheduled meeting is November nineteen, according to the agenda. So we, it sounds like we have a couple of items on the agenda for that meeting. With that, now is the time for a public comment on any matter within the jurisdiction of this board that is not on the agenda. I know we do have a member of the public here. If he wishes to make any comments, he can raise his hand. Any public comment? All right. Well, with that, we will be adjourned for the evening. Thank you all and see you next month.